Good evening, everybody. The county commissioners, we actually have some items on the agenda tonight, and they involve takings, and their takings are an important activity. So, we'll try and pay some attention to those. So, we'll call the meeting to order. And Libby, any announcements? Did you get to read that first little phrase there?
Uh, sure.
That'd be great.
This meeting is being video and audio recorded, and that is an announcement in accordance with the open meeting law provisions.
Any other announcements?
No.
That's it? All right. Is there any public comment tonight for items that are not on the county's agenda?
We pretend...
For this, the county's agenda, we're gonna have a town agenda following. If you would like to speak to Mr. Kelly, he'd love to hear from you. Anybody else? No, okay. New business? I would mention one thing to the county commissioners right now, that when we did our election of officers a couple of weeks ago, it had not come to my attention that Mr. DeCosta would have continuing items he might take up with the state regarding Nantucket Fisheries. And as such, I think it would be helpful if he became the chair of the county commissioners and had the title to go with his state activities. So, I think what we'll do, because it's best to have such an item on the agenda, we'll schedule a meeting of the county commissioners, maybe as soon as next week. And the only business item I would know of would be to have a new election of officers, and if it works with all the members, we might just swap positions, Mr. DeCosta and Mr. Atherton. So, I just want to let you all know, that has a good purpose. So, if there's no other new business, then we'll go on to the approval of minutes, warrants, and pending contracts. We do have minutes for the April 27 meeting. Are there any comments or corrections from the members?
Hearing none.
They'll be approved. And the approval of the payroll warrant. If there are no objections to the payroll and treasury warrants for May 2016, hearing none, they will be approved. Then we do have four public hearings scheduled, three of which are related to the Boulevard, which has been an ongoing activity of the community in terms of the town taking sections of the Boulevard easements to make it a public way. And we have improvements sort of taking place a third at a time to have the Boulevard repaved and brought up to standards between Surfside Road and the airport. These three items are related to that. The last one, these four items, the other two, one is related to a naming of a road and taking of a way, and the last one will continue to June 23rd. So, because these are takings, why don't we open them one at a time? And the first one will open a public hearing to consider the taking of ways pursuant to Mass General Law 79 and 82 for Lover's Way, Orkewa...
Okewa.
Orkewa, thank you Bobby. And Monahasset between the Boulevard and Airport Road. So, either, and Andrew will explain what we're up to in detail, and then we'll open it up for anybody who has any comments on these. Andrew, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, what we're doing in this first action is we're completing the loop and completing the main Boulevard Lover's, Okewa, and Monahasset section. So, we did 50% of that last year, and there was an appropriation at town meeting. This most recent town meeting, there was another appropriation. So, now we're finishing basically this loop. So, this will now connect from Surfside Road via Boulevard Lover's, Okewa Avenue, and Monahasset to the end of Airport Road. So, the taking stays within the limit of the roads as laid out, so it doesn't go onto private property, and basically would turn this into a public way.
Right. Anybody here tonight wish to comment on the first of these items? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion there. I will declare that we'll close the public hearing. So, Andrew, under those circumstances, we don't have to have a second meeting?
That's correct.
And the board could act on the matter this evening?
Yes.
Motion to approve the takings.
Motion to approve made. Second, further discussion? Hearing none?
I have a quick question. Is our intention still to have no betterments in this area?
Some of us might think betterments would be appropriate, but I think, quite frankly, the actions so far have not included betterments, Matt. And I have heard, other than perhaps a few individuals, there's been no groundswell of those who live along the Boulevard to entertain takings, nor have I heard any support for that coming from other board members. So, I think that's, other board members could comment on that. That's where I think we've been all along.
Yeah, no, I'm just making sure. I'm gonna vote against it for that reason. I think we have enough expenses that everyone's gonna be expected to pay, and a small portion of this could have been picked up, so.
Clearly, I agree with you. I'm not gonna vote against it for that reason, but I felt all along, and if you go back three or four years, Matt, I had conversations sort of sidebar with people representing the Boulevard, and my feeling at that time had been something like a 25-75 split would have been fair and equitable for all concerned, but it certainly didn't carry the day.
I understand. So, I'm just fighting the lost fight.
I understand. So, we have a motion that's been made and seconded. And so, I gather, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
And all opposed?
No.
All right. The vote is four to one to carry out those takings. With that, then, we'll go to the next section, and we'll open a public hearing to finalize the layout of a public way and taking of permanent easements over parcels A, B, C, D, and E on a Plan Number 2012-85. And Andrew, again, take us through this, please.
Mr. Chairman, on the map behind you, you see that these, basically five parcels, were on a separate map, and they were inadvertently left out of the original taking. So, these need to be included as part of the main section of Boulevard, and this action corrects that.
Okay. So, it's a public hearing. Are there any comments on this item for the commissioners this evening? Seeing no comments, we'll close the public hearing.
Motion to approve the taking.
And again, the pleasure of the board. So, we have a motion here to approve the layout of a public way and the taking of the easement that's been made and seconded. Further discussion? Okay?
I'm opposing for the same reason.
Same reason, okay.
I think we have a lot of expenses and people on fixed incomes, and I'm afraid, there's no such thing as a free lunch, and we can't keep paying for everybody, so.
And my response to that is, this road's used by the public. Morning's used by the individuals that live on it. So, therefore, it's a public road, and we should pay to fix it.
I understand. I just, I differ. I think there's a percentage that should be...
If you lived on it, you might not differ.
That may or may not be true.
Anyway.
Anyways, we understand the debate and the issues involved in that subject. They're not easy, nor necessarily pleasant, but they are what they are. So, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 And all who oppose?
No.
So, four to one on that motion as well. Next, we will open a public hearing to consider the layout of a public way between Lover's Lane and Pochek to Nobodir Avenue and Surfside, and a permanent easement over all parcels as shown on Plan Number 2016-37. And again, Mr. Vorsch will help explain what we're up to here.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, this section, again, is in between two sections of public road. So, you have Nobodir Avenue to the south, and you have the end of the current taking of Boulevard at Clifford to the north. So, this proposed taking fills in that section and would turn this piece into a public way. That's been advisable for the circulation of this particular area. This is the main route where the proposed bike path would end and bring people down further to the beach. It also allows the posting of parking and other things along this road, so.
Okay. So, this is a public hearing. Would anybody wish to comment on this item this evening? Ah, Mr. Fredericks.
Mr. Fredericks, for the record. Chairman, I would really just have a general question. Between all of the takings and the some $3-plus million that town plans to put into the area, will there be a public presentation on the final design and plan for the whole roadway improvement, just to make sure that, if I do live in the area, many, I'm one of the year-round people, many of the people who are seasonal ask me all the time, what's the final design going to look like, and where will it be vetted?
Well, I'm not sure what has been planned yet, but I think that's an excellent idea. The best thing we can do is take interest from the public. Before we get so far down the road, it's hard to modify, if that's helpful. Carol?
Wanted to let you know that the plans have been completed, and we did send copies out to the Surfside Association. So, they have weighed in with the things that they wanted to see changed.
Well, they might be helpful, then, to share them, even if it's a brief presentation for the, if it's the county commissioners or the board, either one, and Mr. Fredericks and others who were not part of that review, which didn't take place on camera in a public meeting, I think that would be helpful, so.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, we could probably do that at the June county meeting?
Yeah, I think it's just a good practice, so. Because this is a major construction and a major road improvement undertaken by the community, so. All right, so, any other public comments tonight before we continue? Seeing none, why don't we close the public hearing? And again, the pleasure of the board?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, made and seconded. Same situation, I assume, with Mr. Fee. So, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and all opposed?
All opposed.
So, it's four to one on the vote for item C. Next, we'll open a public hearing to consider the layout of a public way between Tacoma to a point about 800 feet length going north off of the road to a terminus. And this is a road that has been just before the board and the public for probably two or three years or more, and we're formalizing our activities here. The road has been laid out generally to accommodate the town's plan to move forward with affordable housing on this site. So, Andrew, I'll turn to you again to explain what we're up to here.
Certainly, Mr. Chairman. So, on the map behind you, just to orient you, you see, actually, this is... So, you have Fairgrounds Road up here. Tacoma Way is running along this side, and so the way is outlined in highlight here. It is in generally the same vicinity as the original subdivision of this particular area that was submitted by the electric company. It's in conformance with the Castle Booze Plan for the site. The road lines up with the rear property line of the public safety lot, which is this big piece here, which has the fire, the police station and future fire station. Goes to a cul-de-sac at this point. There may be future opportunities to connect the road depending on what happens with the main municipal lot, and here you can see the back of two fairgrounds. So, the road is a standard width of 40 feet, and that's the layout, not the traveled way. So, there still needs to be a design of what the traveled way width would be. That's traditionally somewhere between 18 and 20 feet, which would go pretty much in the center of that. And what this does is it does create the frontage for the future of the potential housing sites that would be located basically on this big lot that's outlined here between the road and Fairgrounds Road. Also, you do need to pick a name for the lot. Like I said, the original name was called Wait Drive. That was named for one of the owners of the land when it was the fairgrounds back in the 1870s. If you want a different name, you would need to discuss that tonight.
But it's about time.
That's a good idea, Bobby. We're waiting.
I'm kidding.
Well, you're sort of not kidding.
Andrew, so, this is just the take, this is just the layout for the taking. It doesn't, it's 40 feet, still leaves us room for sidewalks, sewer easements, all utilities. We'll do that later on.
Right. This is just the broad, general layout of the road right now. The design, which would include all those features, will come later.
Right. And 40 feet's enough to get, if we wanted to have sidewalks on each side, and still have a wide enough way, because we usually do like 20, 24 max, which still leaves us 14 feet, so.
Right. And we've actually, we've reserved some extra easements on both sides in the event that it might be curving, or, you know, to allow a little more room.
Since in this case, we're dealing with ourselves, we can pretty much do whatever we think is appropriate.
Yeah, it's just nice to make sure we've got everything right. We're not taking too much, but we have enough if we, so.
All right. Now, this is a public hearing. Is there anybody here tonight who would like to comment on the matter? I don't see any hands, so we will close the public hearing. And board, we have a couple of items to consider here.
Do we have to name it tonight?
We don't, I don't think we have to.
Nope.
So, we could entertain a motion to lay it out in the length as presented and take up the naming at a later date. Is that so moved?
Second.
Moved and seconded, so any further discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. We have a vote of five to zero on the layout, and the naming will take up at a later date.
We should have a longer... Put something on the website for suggestions for a name or something.
We'll talk about it. Okay. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Now, the last item is an easement that we've talked over several times concerning the Cape Cod Bank Parking Lot Easement, and, but it's asked to be continued to June 22nd. But we'll still open the public hearing, and if anybody is here tonight who can't make a June 22nd, who would like to comment on this item, we'd be happy to hear from you this evening. I don't see any hands, so I'd accept the motion to continue the matter to June 22nd.
Motion to continue to June 22nd.
Made second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you very much. All right. Are there any other commissioner comments or reports this evening? Seeing none, why don't we call for a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Made by Mr. Colley, seconded by Mr. Fee. All in favor, say aye. Thank you very much. Jim, we'll turn the meeting back over to you.
Thank you, Rick. Call the meeting to order of the Board of Selectmen for May 25, 2016. Board members, you've received the board agenda. Any comments or questions? So, we'll move on. Libby, announcements?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, this meeting is being video and audio recorded. We have a number of vacancies that are current for 2016 Committee, Board, and Commissions, and we probably will take this off for next week because you have a public hearing for tonight and one more next week on the applications, and then the appointments are scheduled to be made on June 22nd. The Memorial Day Parade will be held this Sunday, the 29th, starts at 1:00 p.m. at the American Legion. And town offices will be closed on Monday, May 30th for Memorial Day.
Any else? Okay. Thank you. Is there any, is there any public comment to come before the board tonight on a matter that's not on the agenda? I heard from someone who, come right up, sir.
Thank you, BOS. My name is Chuck Colley. I'm speaking on behalf of the Liverboards in the Harbor. It's come to our attention, when we've paid our fees, our mooring fees, that parking has changed dramatically this year with regard to staying overnight in the Town Pier Parking Lot. I understand that this is something that the Board of Selectmen voted on in 2014. Nothing was implemented that year or last year. In other words, parking for Liverboards in Town Pier Parking Lot was the same until just this week, or when everybody started to get permits to park their cars overnight this year. So, I respectfully ask that you guys revisit this issue and come to a determination that would be more favorable for those of us who live in the harbor. As I said, my name's Chuck Colley. My address is Mooring K-10.
How many people?
Has been for sixteen years, sorry. Well, Melissa, my wife, and I have lived aboard for 16 years now, and it's always been this way. It's convenient for us, but it's also a good usage of space in that town parking lot isn't being used at night, except by us. And most of the people that live in the harbor work, so in the mornings, they're gone. It's just like someone's driveway. And obviously, Town Pier and Town Pier Parking Lot for us is, that's kind of where our driveway starts. I mean, we park the car, get in the dinghy, go to the boat, et cetera, et cetera. Sorry.
And how many people are Liverboards on?
I don't really have that information. I'm guessing somewhere around 10 or a dozen.
Oh, they're all here. You're all here? Yeah. This is something I don't...
Yeah, we are. We're mostly here.
I think this is, it seems like a reasonable...
We need to put this on our agenda.
Reasonable request, and we'll put it on the agenda, Libby? For, unless you have, what are your comments?
I was explaining to Chuck earlier, and as the board knows, you don't take action on public comment during your meetings, but we had a very little bit of time to look into this a little this afternoon. It came to our attention very late. In 2014, the Board of Selectmen, at someone's request, we're not, we don't, we didn't go back and look at videos or anything like that to see whose it was, but there, the traffic and parking regulations were amended in such a way that the Liverboards were allowed to obtain residential parking permits, and so they would have the same privileges as the other people who have residential parking permits. And in that transaction, it seems that the overnight permits were eliminated. What we were trying to find out this afternoon was, were people actually, despite that, issued overnight permits last year? And it seems a little bit vague. Some people are saying yes. Some people are saying they don't remember. The chief may know. But if the board does wish to change that, then we could schedule a public hearing. I think the sort of problematic thing here is we've made lots of changes to the traffic and parking regulations, not in a terribly cohesive manner. So, if we want to do it again...
Well, it seems like there's a pretty good turnout of people who are interested in this, so I think it's worth having a public hearing to discuss and come forward with some options.
Okay.
Hopefully, if I can just interject, hopefully, it's, it's a seasonal thing. I mean, obviously, all of us are just now getting to the point, I mean, literally, this week, last week, this coming week, coming to a point where this is crucial. This is very important. I believe that lumping us together with the rest of the people that live downtown is, I don't think that really does us...
Right. So, you're getting into the area of, you know, this is public comment to come, and you've raised the issue, and we'll take it up.
Okay.
And we'd happy, and then it'd be good for you all to come back and stand up and give us your opinion.
Mr. Chairman, can I make a comment here?
Yes.
Because I just have to say this. This is a big, this is a problem where we have gotten so, we've gotten so strict, I can't use the word I want to use, about our regulations and how we control things in this town, that we cause more problems. In a second, chief, I see you back there. The chief of police now decides who gets these parking stickers. Forever, the harbor master knew who her Liverboards were, and she, and her commercial fishermen that would be in the marine, in the Town Pier at 2:00, 1:00 o'clock in the morning, and Dave and then Sheila would give out stickers, not a lot, 15 or 20 of them max, to the people that truly lived on their boats and to the commercial fishermen that truly went down to the barina early in the morning. They would be able to park overnight in the town lot, which basically sits empty, and then they were gone, like Chuck said, during the day. But now, we've rewritten these regulations so many times, and no offense to anyone, that now we have to have a public hearing. And the chief's just doing what he's supposed to do, but, you know...
Chief, I don't think, I don't think we need to, we brought the issue up, and I...
There was misinformation given here.
Well, we can talk about it at the, at the public hearing. Bring it back as an agenda.
Okay. The public hearing would have to be a public hearing to change the traffic regulations.
We understand the rules, so.
So, you'd have to, we'd have to post it and all that.
Yeah, thank you.
Got it. I think, I think the earliest possible time we could do it would be June 22nd.
Okay. Well, look at, look at some, see if there are some other accommodations we can make in the meantime. If not...
Can we do something temporary?
You can always use a little discretion until then, Jim.
You can, you can...
They've got permits.
So...
With all due respect, chief, finding a place...
Right. So, sir, we're...
Oh, okay. Another time.
I think you're better off coming back when we have this as an agenda, and we'll figure out a way to...
In my last comment to you, I think I was just trying to...
We'll figure out a way to get some accommodation.
That would be great.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else to come before, any matter that's not on the agenda tonight for public comment? Thank you. When I became chairman, this is exactly the kind of topic that we encourage people to come and chat with us about. We can't make a decision tonight, and there's ways to, through the system, to resolve this issue, and I know from the audience I've had up here, this board's committed to doing that. So, thank you all for coming tonight. Is there any new business to come before this board tonight? Next item is approval of minutes, warrants, and pending contracts. We have the minutes of April 26, 27, 2016. Any changes, any open wants to make? Approval of payroll warrants for weekending May 22nd, and approval of treasury warrants for May 25th. Any comments, questions? If not, they're approved as presented. And Libby, approving of pending contracts for May 25th on Exhibit 1. Would you like to...
I'll take you through.
...review those with us? Thank you.
We have an amendment to our professional services agreement for the fire department, really, it's for the town, with Castle Booze Architects. It's an additional $4,000 to our existing architectural contract for the new fire station, and it has to do with painting this building in conjunction with that project. And we have funding for that in a prior town meeting. We have a professional services agreement for GPW, also really town slash GPW, with Weston and Sampson. This is an engineering firm. $2,125,500. This is for the design services for the sewer project that was approved at the 2016 annual town meeting, Nantucket Harbor, Shimo, and Plus Parcels. We have an amendment to professional services agreement for Our Island Home with Kirkland, Albrecht, and Frederickson to amend our current contract with that firm, to add an additional $8,000 to it, and that's for accounting services for Medicaid and Medicare cost reports. As you might recall, we approved a contract with this firm last week for the next three years, and this is for the current contract, because we know now that it needs to increase to get us through the end of the fiscal year. We have a host community benefit agreement for town administration, Board of Selectmen with a group called Mass Medispot, Inc., and this has to do with this group having been approved locally as a registered medical marijuana dispensary. It came to our attention after this matter came to the board last summer. So, just to back up, maybe I should explain this a little bit. A few years ago, state legislation was passed which requires a medical marijuana dispensary in every county of the Commonwealth. In most counties, there are several towns, and the medical marijuana dispensaries would seek to locate themselves in a town. And often, in order to locate themselves in a town, they entered into a host, they enter into a host community benefit agreement with the town, and it provides them, the town, some opportunity to impose provisions or receive payment in exchange for having them in their town. So, it came to our attention after the board, after the medical marijuana dispensary group came to the board last summer for its citing requirement that we could enter into this agreement. So, we've been discussing it with them for the last several months and have reached an agreement with them pending the board's approval for an annual minimum payment of $20,000, and that's based on the sales of different products, and a maximum payment of $300,000. This, this business is not in operation yet. They have not yet received the required approval from the state, and obviously, it's all very highly regulated. But this would be an appropriate thing for the town, because we would get some revenue out of it. Do you have any questions about that?
Now, Rick?
So, the term of the arrangement, I mean, if it turns out, you know, facts on the ground are different than we might have expected, is this changeable, amendable? How long does this arrangement last with these kinds of numbers in it?
It is reviewable. Just give me a moment here. It's, the provisions are applicable as long as the group operates its facility in the town, and we can amend it or terminate it with, subject to differing notice requirements.
Right. I'm saying, you know, if they end up doing five times the business, Libby, or something, you might, we might have a different approach here. And you don't want to feel you're locking in before a business even opens its doors, necessarily. We, if it had an option for the town to, you know, open up the arrangement after two years, at our option, and not be mutual, is it five?
After five.
No. At least after five, and that's at our option. It doesn't have to be mutual. Some, sometimes you can open up a contract if both parties agree. Sometimes you can open it up by one or the other unilaterally, and I think it's important to know how this one works.
I think it's five-year escalations, and it's based on the average of each...
I think it's five-year escalations, and it's based on the average of each year, so the, the three highest years, then you can base it on that and go forward.
I think the question is, can you reopen it for other reasons?
For, for any reason. I'm just curious.
So, I don't know, Libby, you want to come back next time?
Well, I, yeah, I probably should have been prepared for that specific question.
Okay. That's fine. We can bring it back next time. It's an important question.
I can get you the answer to that.
Okay, great. So we will remove that and bring it up, put it on next week's contract list?
Sure.
And with that amendment, is there any other comments or questions about the pending contract? They are approved. We have consent agenda and two items. The town clerk requests for reappointment of constables for three-year terms. She's here tonight.
Do you want to finish, or we've got three more on the list here?
Oh, I thought, oh, sorry, you didn't go through everything.
No.
Libby, you want to continue on with the review?
Sure. We have a professional services agreement for visitor services with a group called Paper Crane Associates, $9,888, $80. This is for an operational assessment of our Department of Culture and Tourism, formerly known as Visitor Services, and this was something budgeted in Town Administration's fiscal 16, our current fiscal year budget. We have a supply agreement for GPW with Miles Reese Trucking. It's $10,000 over a one-year period, and that is for roadway supplies and materials. And we have a license agreement last with board, with Nantucket Electric. We receive $1 from, well, maybe we will, from National Grid, and this is for an underground electric, electric distribution system for the new intermediate school.
Good, thanks. Any other questions? So with that amendment, they are, they stand approved? As I said earlier, we have two items on the consent agenda. One is the request from the town clerk for reappointment of constables for three-year terms. They are outlined in your packet, and without question, they are, they're approved, the planning office. We have a request for execution of purchase and sale agreement, and a quick claim deed and settlement statement for town-owned yard sale parcels, known as parcel A1 and A2, I believe, or 2A. Any questions or comments from anyone on that? So it stands approved. Citizen departmental request, Libby, you want to, from the Nantucket Land Council. I see Cormac coming up.
I'll let Cormac take it over.
Come on up, come on up.
Thank you, Libby.
Hi Cormac.
Hi, how are you?
Good.
Cormac Collier for the Nantucket Land Council, here before you for a conservation restriction on Eel Point Road. You've already had a previous hearing, or not hearing, but meeting to send it off to town council. The Nature Conservancy is giving this conservation restriction to the land council in advance of transferring the property over to the Lindelloring Nature Foundation, which is a, a nice thing to do, and actually gives us more local control, which is good. Town council, as I said, has a letter in your packet as approving it as to form. We are here, as we always do with the restrictions, to ask that you find the restriction is in the public interest.
And I just had one question, so, and reading it, it gives the, the, gives you approval to build buildings and construct, so, has I read that in there, or maybe I just misread it?
No, I think you might have switched, switched it around. The way the restrictions are written is that there's prohibited, there's a purpose section to start with, there is a prohibited uses section, and then there's a reserved rights section. For this restriction, there is no right to retain any building envelopes or anything. This is just completely open.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Andrew?
Chairman, through you, could I ask a question? Cormac, I didn't read this, but I see that the restricted area crosses Eel Point Road. Could you explain what the implications of that are?
There's no intent whatsoever to not allow Eel Point Road status quo to happen, exactly the same as the previous restriction that we did with the Lindelloring. We don't want to move that road into the layout. Existing use is allowed from now into the foreseeable future in terms of us being the grantee. We're not going to enforce saying you can't get it off.
Should we get that in writing? I mean, no offense Cormac, but we all-
Oh, no, that's, that's, that's fine. I, I, you know, this was done by the Nature Conservancy through-
Maybe when council reviews-
Our council and, and town council. Without, before me, I couldn't tell you exactly if there was something specifically saying that, that mimicked the last language. If you'd like that, we can easily put that in. I just don't necessarily want to hold it over again for another-
I think it's, I think it's an important question.
For another, another month.
So, well- I think 20 years from now, when we're all not here, you know?
Yeah.
Somebody decides they want to change the road, because they, they find something there that they think is important.
Yeah, there's, there's also a way you could maybe do it as well, as terms of asking for a voluntary transfer to the town for the Eel Point Road, when the transfer from the Nature Conservancy goes to the Lindelloring Nature Foundation, because then that really gets it into your control.
Maybe it's something we should discuss, or just mention at the council when he reviews the easement. They, they- And so this is addition, this is our opportunity to comment on it, so it sounds like we have one item, we'd like to have further discussion on it. We'll leave it to Andrew and Cormac.
Well, how about this, what if we make a contingent on that road? You know, why don't we make, if we make a vote contingent on Eel Point Road staying open, then it's in the record, and that we can go forward with this, and it's in the record if anyone gets to the point where they want it.
Or do we want to, as Cormac say, put it in our inventory or whatever?
Excuse me, if, just if it has to get changed on the, the paper itself, then I have to send it back to the state first, for signature. I have to send it to the, our treasurer and our president for signature, Nature Conservancy for signature. That's fine, I'm, I'm not opposed, because this is what we're before you asking to do. It's just, there's a bit of a process in terms of doing that. If there's a way we could fast-track it besides doing that, I'd appreciate it.
Andrew, what are your thoughts?
I mean, I do think it's important to have a clear understanding in that, because I don't want to be in a situation where there's going to be an interpretation about, you know, if the road has to be changed, if some sort of work has to be done. I mean, if it could be accomplished through a side letter or something, to avoid having to be completely rewritten. I mean, I understand.
It doesn't sound like it's too burdensome, changing.
Yeah. I think we, I think we definitely hear your intention.
They can figure out the best mechanism.
We can ask our council, work with Andrew through town council as well. Best mechanism, if there's a fallback, there's no best mechanism. We'll change the language of the CR and redo the, redo the signatures.
Maybe just like Andrew says, a side letter agreement between the town and, and the land council.
No problem.
Okay. Just a motion to hold it over.
Okay. So we're going to hold it over until the next?
I'm not sure.
Or do you want to, what do you want to do?
I'd like to vote approval with the, yeah, with understanding that, you know, point remains open in a side letter, or a change be implemented.
But it's not going to move forward until that, that relate, that, that issue's resolved.
Right, but I'm, I'm making an approved contingent on resolving that.
All right, so that you, I made that as a motion?
I made it, yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
That's all.
So my only question, my, my only question is, I'd like to see what the, what the accommodation is before I vote on it personally, so that's just my-
And was there a motion that was found in the public interest?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm going to go ahead. I think we have confidence between Andrew and Cormac that the language will accomplish the intent, and so I'm, I'm going to vote in favor with that understanding, so.
Bobby?
I feel the same way. It's not like, I, I, I don't think that the land bank, or the land council has any ill intent here, so as long as it's clear, and whether it's a sidebar letter, or, I, I have faith that if it needs to be completely rewritten, that Cormac will go down that way.
Yeah, absolutely.
All right, good.
And we can send an email off to town council tomorrow about what's the best way to do that?
Just let us know.
Any further discussion before we take a vote?
Yeah, I don't want to, I don't want to take Eel Point Road, we'll have guys who want to pave it. I mean, I'm more scared of that, so.
I, I'm more worried about moving it into the actual layout than, like you said, Matt, because then at that point, we'll start to make improvements and everything else.
I know, that's what I'm saying. The last thing I want to do is, you know, run them up there.
So I think we're all, it sounds like you're, we're all competent in the process, and we'll go for a vote. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? That's unanimous.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. We have a series of public hearings tonight. The first item is a public hearing to consider increasing feet per ton for mixed excavation waste. This is a continuation from last week. And just so, you know, for, for the board and also for the audience, just to kind of recap where we were last week, town, town administration proposed a rate increase from $30 to $60 a ton of the mixed excavation waste, which is the amount that is in the current fiscal year budget. Board members asked questions about the, the amount of money that the town pays, what the difference is. We got some, we got some indications about how the volume has increased significantly over the last several years. And then we also asked, what is the, what's, what's the mix of vendors, the numbers of people, and the percent that each hauler uses? And so Libby's got that information, and we have another recommendation from town administration. So Libby, you want to?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chairman. There's a note, an update that was given to you prior to the meeting, which reiterates some of what the chairman said. One of the things the board asked for last week is, of the tonnage that comes in for the mixed excavation waste, who is bringing it in? In other words, are there a lot of people that bring it in, or are there just a few? And it turns out, there is really one hauler that brings in the great majority of it, about 90% of it. And there's a little bit more that, that we learned in talking with that hauler about mixed excavation waste, which, which I made a note of in the update, which has largely to do with the fact that the spike in volume over the last couple of years seems to, to be, because of an increase in construction, of course, and lots of digging going on, but also, there are various sand pits around the island where people, contractors excavate sand out of, and as sand becomes no longer available in those pits, they are being filled in and used for real estate development purposes. And so the mixed excavation waste was being essentially taken to those pits and, and-
Used as fill.
Used as fill. And as those pits are filling in, there's not as much of a need for that anymore, so now this waste is going to the landfill. The pits are getting full, exactly. So we, I discussed a little bit with the hauler, if the town increases its fee to the fee that it pays to Waste Options to process the waste, which is around $103 per ton, would they still bring it in? And they indicated they may not. They may figure out a different solution, and in which case, we wouldn't get it anymore, but we also wouldn't need to pay a processing fee anymore.
And also fill up our landfill.
And also fill up our landfill, right.
Well, we, we truck it off.
I don't know that we truck all of it off.
Some is covered.
Yeah, well, it's, some of it's used as cover, and some, they have to figure out what to do, because it's not usable for much. But I don't, I don't think it's all taken off.
I thought, I'm sorry, I thought that the way I read the, what was posted last week was that the $103 was the cost for trucking it off, I?
No, it's just for processing it, dealing with it, but it doesn't include trucking off.
Okay. Good. A lot of money to move it from point A to point B, but that's a whole other discussion. Anyway.
So we are recommending that the hearing be closed right now with no action, because the hearing notice specifically said that we were considering increasing the fee from $30 to $60, and if we were going to go higher than that, then we'd have a problem because of the public notice requirements. So we recommend that we schedule a new public hearing for our next round of public hearings on June 15th, to consider a higher fee increase, such as perhaps the 103 per ton, or whatever the exact fee is that we pay Waste Options.
So I just have a couple comments. One is, I don't know where to start, but as you, as we consider in the next recommendation or next thought of fee increase, a couple of items that I would be interested in understanding is, you know, a breakdown of other fees that we are, you know, we are paying, and the amount of shortfall that there may be in other categories. I'd like to know, as we look back over the last, I think it's three years or even longer, what's the, what's the budget, what's the financial impact of that, of that gap over the years, and how much of that, how much of that subsidy is being paid by the taxpayers? And those are just a couple of items I had. I didn't know if, if other board members have input that they'd like to add, so we can have all these issues brought out on the 15th.
Yeah, I, I think this is, I think I find this different than TVs and mattresses that the seasonal guys of the low income are throwing on the moors. This is mostly brought by reputable haulers who are not going to dump this stuff on the moors. They may find another way to deal with it, but I don't think that there, a subsidy is required. I think the, the landowners, the, you know, the, the construction is being paid for, and I, I don't think that we have to worry about this, you know, some of these trucks backing up and dumping it somewhere. There's, I just think it's a different circumstance. So I'd be in favor of getting, you know, getting our cost back at minimum and protecting the taxpayer.
And the reason I've asked for the lookback is, we, you know, depending on the, right now, we're looking at about 1.4 million, I think, shortfall, and how long has this been going on, and maybe we do kind of, maybe we should consider a catch-up in the fees, so all that should be on the table from my point of view.
I think it's helpful to make clear, this is, we're talking not, we have one, we have two fees here. One, we have a contract, contract with Waste Options to pay them X amount. The other fee we're talking about is set by the town, can be changed by the town at any point in time. It's totally within our control, and so it's not a external contract issue, as, I'm not sure Waste Options is external, but it doesn't have the same limitations in terms of our management of what we charge in this area.
Now, if we're going to discuss other fees on the 15th, we would need to notice it to discuss more than just this category, I believe.
Well, I, I just wanted to get, ask, the finance department through Libby, and maybe we can't, I'm not suggesting we discuss other fees, but I'd like to know, because, you know, if, 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 for example, haulers are paying a big premium in another category, and we have a profit, so to speak, and I'd like to see a whole picture.
That's, that's, we've asked that discussion before.
Okay.
Those are proprietary numbers between Waste Options and the haulers. They won't tell us what they're charging.
No, no, I'm not, I'm talking about our costs.
No, I know, and I'm talking about our costs. When we pay Waste Options so much per ton to hand, to take care of C and D, they won't tell us what they're charging the haulers. We know what the public rate is, but we don't know what the rate is for the individual haulers. In other words, what you and I pay when we take C and D in there is not the same as what Tuscana pays, or anybody else pays. They have separate deals with them. We, the contract change that we did allowed them to do that.
But we do know in the aggregate, and we know the posted fee for some people who pay the posted fee, so, and I'm not sure we should, I think we should do all that and get the information, Jim?
Yeah.
I don't know if you want to, we don't have to do it at the same time we're doing this. I mean, I don't mind, but, but this one's pretty straightforward.
For me, I just need kind of like a bigger, the big picture, so.
The questions I have is, I have two, is, one is, for the $103 that we're paying Waste Options, which we've already negotiated and we can't change, I know, what are they doing with what they're getting? I want to know where it's going. How much of it is being shipped off island? How much of it is using as act pack? How much of it is being used for cover on the landfills? And the second-
It's all, it's all being used, and it's screened and sorted.
So we're paying them $103 a square-
And they're taking out the lumber and, and roots and so forth. Everything else is being used.
So what do they do with, like, the big chunks of concrete? Because I know there's some of that, and rocks and stuff.
That goes into C and D.
So what I'd like to see is, and this is something that, which goes back to the changing of the guard so much for the county commissioners, is because one of the things that happened over on the Cape last year was that the town of Yarmouth, Yarmouth Dennis, got a permit from the state to build an artificial reef, and they used local, your local C and D, basically, not C and D, but local concrete rubble from, I think it came from Johnny Hour over there, and they barged it out and made an artificial reef out of it. It's perfect for that. So we might be able to separate this stuff out. Pete and I, Pete Kaiser and I have been working with the state to get a permit for Pete Kaiser and I have been working with the state to get a permit for an artificial reef in front of Nantucket. And if we can, if that stuff is being sifted out already and it looks like we're going to get the permit, maybe we can start to stockpile that and then we can use it for this reef. And it won't, it won't have to be trucked away or go into the C and D pile and we'll have the makings of a reef for the future.
I think it sounds like, in addition to the fee discussion, and I think it's appropriate under that, and we'd like to just hear a little bit about the, you know, what happens when it arrives, where does it get used?
I think it might be a good time to have the ABCs of Waste Options and the landfill. Because there's cost centers that were structured into the contract twenty years ago so that one item is overpaid for so that it funds the other.
And that's what I was trying to get to.
C and D and municipal solid waste. The mixed excavation pays for landscaping waste. So I think it would be helpful to lay all that out.
Because that would be good input for us to make a decision about a fee. And do we have, do we charge any administrative processing? I know we send out the bills to the haulers, so there's got, there's some overhead fee?
We cover that in the, the operational budget.
But is there any, do you allocate overhead of, you know, the administrative overhead to each of these cost centers?
None of it.
And is there, oftentimes organizations do business and do that?
There's only, there's only one employee, one part-time employee, the take it or leave it operator, that's actually in the solid waste budget.
All right. Okay. Good.
I have a question, Carl. How do they oversee, because mixed excavation waste is thirty dollars and, you know, and C and D is three sixty, and how do they oversee what, which category, if a truck pulls up?
At the scale house, the operator of the scale takes a look at the load, decides what it is, and then makes the charge. So it's the person in the scale house making the decision.
Okay. And, but, because the reason I'm asking, you were just saying, well, jeez, if there's any concrete in the waste, then we do, then it goes to C and D. Well, shouldn't have been in C and D to begin with because it's more expensive or?
No, if it's got dirt mixed, they have to separate the dirt.
The dirt can't go into C and D.
So they can't put the dirt. So, yeah, so we've got to look at it. The other thing that just sort of, because we've been dealing a bit with biodegradable stuff and had the guys from Tri-Max here and a bunch of people, and I just feel like our incentives, you know, in this and in that are kind of messed up. Like, I think the incentives aren't necessarily to do the things you think you'd want to do with it. I mean, I just look and what's the incentive really to figure it out and to make sure it's charged enough? We just have to get more of a handle of the dump. The townies have more of a management and handle of the Waste Options and the dump than we do, I think, in the long run.
And I think if we describe the actual physical processes, the operation of the digester and what the digester does and what comes out the other end and where that has to go and how that has to be separated and baled and landfilled, do we have another way to deal with it?
If we raise this rate to a hundred and three dollars, this problem will go away.
Which would be great.
It'll go, go onto Carl's barge and it'll go over that way, just like the other stuff.
Yeah, which would be great.
We just have the public hearing, raise the rate to what it costs us and this will take care of itself.
And my, my, my point is, and I don't want to get into the, into the recycling stuff, but that stuff's going through the digester, buried on the hill, and then it, it doesn't do what you think it's going to do. And then it sits on the hill without oxygen and water and doesn't do what you think it's going to do. In places that, you know, handle it properly or handle it better, they have a really, they sort it up front really well. And right now, the, you know, the contract we have doesn't really incentivize anyone to do that. The incentive really is to get as many pounds, as many tons as you can, to get paid as much as you can and bury it, you know? So that's, we have to fix that.
Libby has asked Lauren, our energy coordinator, and Laura Kabati, who works in our facilities, and I to sit down and start working on making sure that we're kind of taking a fresh look.
Yeah, and I think that's great. Because the more, more I learn about it, the corn plastic can't mix with the other plastic and the other plastic can't mix with the corn plastic and the, and if, and it's, they will tarnish it. And you have all this organic, but then the glass gets in with it. So it's, you know, we're just sort of.
Well, and maybe what we can explain to you is where, where the glass goes separately. That actually doesn't get shipped off because it weighs too much.
I understand.
So that gets crushed and buried.
Maybe biodegradable isn't all it's cracked up to be. Maybe we should stick to recycle.
Well, for our particular process, the Bedminster facility, the digester is a four to five day process and the biodegradable materials need twenty-one days. So they come out the other end looking like plastic, so they get buried with the plastic in the hills. So for, for our particular process at this time, it might not be the best option.
Can I just say something about, when we use the phrase buried in the hill, I don't think, you know, people may think we're putting it up in the old hill.
Oh, no, no.
Well, I know, I know we say it, but, but, but I've heard that phrase several times. And, and I think we need to be clear about what we're doing with the, what comes out of the digester, because it's not going on the hill in that old sense.
No, it's getting baled and put in the bale field.
And we should use language that makes clear what's happening to it.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Any other comments from board members? Libby, anything else? All right. So anyone from the public who would like to make a comment on this subject? Hearing none. I will close the public hearing and I suggest that we take no action on this item.
So moved.
So I guess it's only, you know, twenty days.
Three weeks.
Twenty days of continued cost. So we're willing to forego that increase for twenty days.
Well, the recommendation was.
The recommendation was not to go to sixty a day.
No, no, the recommendation was to implement this July first. The original recommendation is sixty. So I assume we'll be able to still do a July first implementation.
So we never would have done it anyway.
Right.
So we're.
That's interesting.
So it's not causing us.
We should have had a recommendation that did it like today, even though we're not doing it that way, so.
Yeah.
Just because each day costs us.
Right. I understand, yeah.
A hundred thousand bucks or something.
We won't be losing any days.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. Anything else? Okay. Let's see. I'm going to open the public, we have a series of public hearings related to various paper streets. And what I'm going to do is open the public hearing as a joint hearing and ask Andrew and to review them with us, item by item. And then we will take action as, we'll take votes at the end of the conversation. And as we go through each one, we'll ask members of the public, people attending, if they wish to make a comment about it. So Andrew?
So the first, number A on your list is two series of roads in Quidnet, Sacacha Road and Ocean Road. I had asked the board that you continue this matter to June twenty-second. The, some of the butters have wanted to have conversation, further conversations about this matter and hopefully we'll, we'll know more at that meeting. So that will give a little time for some interaction among the affected parties.
And before we go to the next one, I just want to make a comment. A couple of weeks ago, the chairman of the, Roderick Reiman, the chairman of the Real Estate Committee, came and made a presentation to us. And I'd not attended a Real Estate Committee meeting, I attended the one last week just to get an understanding about the work they do. And I will tell you that even though these are maybe not dispositions, there was a very thoughtful conversation. The members of the committee are from the real estate, banking and legal community and asked very penetrating, thoughtful questions and all of which were answered well by Andrew Vorse. And so it made me confident that that's a good process going forward. So Andrew, you want to?
Thank you. Well, I got to, I've got to weigh in. I would like to see those thoughtful questions turned into a, a report that we can put in a file so that twenty years from now, we know what we did and why and what the impact was. I got a, we did, down on, just, I have to say, down on Hubbard Ave, we, we did a taking and then we kept a path and then a big house got built. And, you know, I hadn't thought about this, but it took away the views from the neighbors across the street and the whole public going by what used to be a sixty, eighty-foot view of the harbor has a big garage in the way now. And I'm not, there's nothing we can do to change that. But those are the types of things that I think should be, all things should be considered. It should be written down and it should be there for the future. And I just, you know, we do a good job of talking, but I don't think we do a job of writing things down.
And was that matter before the Real Estate Committee?
No, that wasn't.
Okay. So this, I'm just talking about what's ongoing. I'm sure they'd be amenable in their minutes to make those kinds of reports.
Okay. I just, I'd like to.
And Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to clarify that what we're proposing tonight is acquisition, not disposition. So we can put any conditions on disposition, easements or whatever can be put on, you know, at that phase. But we are talking about acquiring property now, not disposing of it.
And I, and I agree with you, Andrew, but sometimes what happens is these things acquire a life of their own and we don't have, we don't have a chance to really think about what should be put on there. And then things like that building pop up. And then we go, oh, jeez, we shouldn't have done it like that. But then I want that, I want that thought process to be laid on to the next group that's doing it, so that we learn, we learn from things.
Yeah. I'd just like to support Matt's comments. We've had enough instances, Jim, where, I know we didn't have a Real Estate Committee and all that, but we need to be extremely careful. And the folks on the Real Estate Committee, I'm not sure any of us has the ability to ask all the questions. So we want to make sure it's open and free enough to get to these kinds of things.
So on this, on this matter, we would ask that you continue to June twenty-second.
I make a motion, we continue this, continue the public hearing to June twenty-second.
I'll second. All those in favor, I?
All right.
I.
No?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Just in case, is there anyone who wanted to make public comment on this tonight that's here? We usually ask, just in case it can't be.
I thought we were going to take a motion all at the end for all of these. No, you want to take them by?
Well, I'm not saying a motion. If anybody wants, if anybody had a public comment.
So anyone from the public who would like to comment on this item? Item A? So.
Next one?
I'll make one comment quickly. When we do go to this disposition, we should be thinking about requiring one big beach easements if we sell it to these guys, because they're not that far from the water. And eventually they may be, you know, it may be useful.
Yeah. Matt, I have talked with the planning director about this item. I live reasonably close by and that and a number of good issues are on the table and the planning director is alert to them in this case. So it's, but that's a good thing to mention because it's, it's important here.
Great. The next group is in Tom Nevers. This is leftover parcels that are part of the grid subdivision from the nineteen sixteen plan. Again, this is an acquisition that would acquire these sections of ways that are really not necessary. At some future point, they would be offered through the yard sale program.
Any comments from the public on this? Okay. Andrew, next.
Just on that one, that might be a good location to leave some kind of a walking path when we do the disposition.
And, and where would that be done?
Down Mayhew.
Here?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Or the other one? Or this one? Okay.
Maybe it's closer to where the beach stairs are.
Yep.
For the people who live up on old Tom Nevers Road.
Mm-hmm.
You want to make a comment?
Yeah, I'm Jeff Sprawl. I guess I'm just a little bit confused because I thought this was voted on two years ago in a town warrant to be acquired. So is this just a further on to that?
This is the implementation of that. So town meeting votes to authorize the board. They are now considering whether or not to move forward with that.
Got it.
Okay.
There's no requirement, it's an authorization. Okay. All right.
Next.
The next one, Eric, sorry. The next one is three lots that are adjacent to what is known as Chase Lane or Proprietor's Road. This is in the Quidnet Squam area. So here is Quidnet Road, here is Squam Road. This is a portion of the Proprietor's Road nearest to these three existing houses. I will tell you that the, there was a request that this also be continued for further study by a, an arbiter that lives further up here. So at this point, in order to look at that, I would ask you to continue that to the twenty-second as well.
So moved?
I want to hear if there's any public comment. Anybody who'd like to speak to this?
I just, my head's up. It's Carrie Thornwell. I'm representing the three homes. My family's home is the one where the road would go right through the clothesline. So I'm just in favor of this move. We're not proposing to take the whole way, just half the way. I understand it's sixteen feet wide of what would be left for anybody to use it to access extra properties. We're not saying we don't want people to access their properties, but we'd like it to stay a dirt road. And I understand the Quidnet Road is, right now, just about sixteen feet wide paved. So we think sixteen feet wide left over after the yellow bits are given back, I guess, would be sufficient to provide access to anybody with properties on the north side of these properties. As I said, the two houses in the north or the left side of the drawing, that road goes right through our backyards. Those houses have been there for at least seventy years. We have no way of mitigating traffic right out the back door, so.
All right, good.
Just a.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else who'd like to speak on this matter? Okay. So we're going to continue a couple and then we'll take action on the other ones at the end. So you want to go to the next one, Andrew?
Yes. The next one is in the Morland Management District, which is essentially south of where Bartlett Farms is located. So there are sections of roadway that were part of an earlier subdivision that basically has pretty much been bought out by the land bank over here. And this particular road goes through the middle of a pond and therefore is unlikely to be built. Again, this is at the taking phase and these roads are clearly not needed and could be basically removed.
Anyone from the public like to make a comment on this before we? Any board members like to comment on this?
I would just like to make one comment on it, and this is for when we get to the disposition. But if we're going to most likely dispose of this to the land bank, I want to make sure that in exchange for that, this dirt road that goes through there, there's some type of permanent easement through here. Because I've seen a lot of these ways that we're here for, since I was a little kid, get closed off as soon as the land bank takes possession of this land. And there are very few access points, as there is now, to the beach. So I, we're going to take a road that we have rights to. We want to make sure we get rights across the land bank's property in exchange. Or we're going to keep the road and cut it in.
Okay.
Okay?
Any other comments? All right.
I agree with Bobby.
I think that was part of the consideration.
Right. There is, there is no road in this, in this long section that leads to the cul-de-sac, but there is to, slightly to the west, a well-used road that runs along there.
Maybe we could do some type of swap or, like we did with the, when we did those other pieces where we got, we had an agreement that we could put a parking lot in and we would have.
And retain rights.
Retain rights across it.
Yep.
Same kind of deal.
Andrew?
And then the next one?
Is in Surfside. This is a section of Weeter Avenue between Surfside Road over here on the west side. It connects to other property that we've actually already disposed of. So it's really an unneeded section. It's generally in Surfside, and this is running an east-west road. We tend to keep paths in our north-south roads because that's the main direction down to the beach. So.
Any comments from the public on this item? Alan, you got it?
This connects from Surfside Road to Noshon Way.
We can't, we can't hear you, gentlemen.
I'm just trying to figure out where this is. No, I live in the area. That's, that's why I'm trying to figure out where this connects to. I see Noshon Road or Noshon Way. No, I, it's okay.
Andrew, do you have any comments or is that?
No, I think, I know that Alan is a great advocate for pathways throughout the area. And where there's paths, we always try to keep those in place where there might be a potential. In this particular location, there really isn't a connection on this side anymore. This is completely, you know, this is completely treeed in and overgrown. And there is actually paths that connect a little bit further on this side over here. So, and anyway, we're, we're taking this. If Alan has a change of heart between now and the next couple of months, and we want to retain some sort of an easement, again, that can be placed on.
Anyone else want to comment on item E? All right, last one?
And the last one, also, this is in Surfside. This is a section of Lover's Lane that comes up from Nobiter Ave. It's currently a dead end now. It's the last section between Lover's Lane and Wee Weeder. The section of Lover's Lane to the north here has already been sold. There is an existing beach path here that we would definitely want to keep in the future. And again, this is part of that north-south roads where the beach paths tend to be. So again, this is an acquisition, the easement part would come prior to any disposition in the future.
Any comments from the public? Yes, ma'am, come right up. Thank you for waiting.
This, I.
Do you wouldn't mind introducing yourself?
Pardon me?
Just introduce yourself?
I'm Mary Teresi.
Hi.
I have a home on the, just below the yellow part on the map, on the right. My concern is it won't be paved, is that correct? It will be just a beach easement?
Yes, the long-term plan here is not for a through road, it's just for a simple walking path.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, thank you.
All right, great. Thank you for coming. Any other comments or questions from the public? All right, any from the board? All right, so just to wrap it up, we have two continuance. Is item A, Andrew, is that continued also to the 22nd?
Yes, please.
So we have two items, item A and item C to be continued until the 22nd, and items B, C, D, E, and F for approval. Is there a motion to take that action?
So moved.
Second.
Is there a second? Any further discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no, it's unanimous. Thank you. Thank you, Andrew.
Thank you very much.
Town manager report, Libby?
No, we missed public hearings.
Oh, I'm sorry, we missed, I'm sorry, we missed.
Continue.
Which one?
Open a public hearing to consider applications for agricultural commission and the items, all the commissions and committees laid out. This is a opportunity where, as someone reminded me, we operate as a pretty, as a volunteer government, and we rely on members of the community to participate.
Did you get, did you get some votes on that?
We did. It was unanimous.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, excuse me, let me start over. So we encourage volunteers, we appreciate the commitment that you make to serve on these commissions and, and boards. And tonight, we are going to be giving opportunity for applicants to come forward with a number of boards to, if they wish, make a comment and tell us a little bit about their interest in that board or commission. And I'm going to start with the agricultural commission. Is there anyone here from the agricultural commission as an applicant who would like to speak before us tonight?
Mr. Chairman, I always thought it was nice if you could, like, say who the applicants are.
Okay, who can do that?
So the public knows.
All right. So in the agricultural commission, we have three seats available. There are two applicants. The two applicants are Abby Wolschleger and Joseph Bauer. Any of them like to come before to speak to us? Anyone from the airport commission, we have one seat available, and we have one applicant, Jeanette Topham. From the board of health, we have one seat available and one applicant, Dr. McNabb.
I'm here.
Thank you for being here. Thank you for your service.
Well, thank you. I just would like to continue. I probably would be my last term. I agree with the concept of term limits, but I figure I'll do one more run.
Good, great.
And that's it, if you'll have me.
Absolutely, thank you, thank you. The capital program committee, we have one seat available and no applicants, so we'll pass on that one.
So we should maybe start beating the bush here.
Yeah.
So I think we got to work to it, Bobby.
Well, yeah, a number of these, we need to do some work and encourage people to apply. Cemetery commission, we have one seat available and one applicant, Barbara White, anyone here?
She was here.
She was here.
Okay.
Yeah, Barbara was here. She had a seven o'clock commitment, so I told her I would speak for her. I'm Alan Reinhardt. I chair the cemetery commission. Barbara was appointed a year ago to fill in a vacancy. And I've got to say, as chairman, she's done an outstanding job as far as the knowledge that she brings of the island cemeteries, the commitment that she's made to it. And she'd very much like to be reappointed, and I would strongly endorse that.
Thank you, thank you for being here. Conservation commission, we have three seats available, four applicants. The applicants are Benjamin Champeau, Champeau?
Champeau.
Champeau.
Joseph Bauer, David LaFleur, and Andrew Bennett. Is there anyone here from, yes, sir, David?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, board members, Ms. Gibson. I'm David LaFleur, been on the board for about a half a term now. I took over for somebody who resigned. I feel like I'm just getting my feet on the ground and getting very comfortable with it, taking some seminars, and I'd like to be reappointed. Thank you.
Thank you for being here, appreciate it. Anyone else from the conservation commission, applicants? Next is contract review subcommittee. We have one seat available and no applicants. So again, this is a very important committee that makes recommendations to this board about the expenditures of our human services budget. So if anyone out there who'd like to participate, it's, we really appreciate your service. Council on Human Services, there is one applicant, five seats available. Again, John Belash. Again, if we have, if anyone has an interest, we encourage you to apply for this position, one of these positions.
This is a committee that we've constantly struggled to get pointees to. And, you know, I hate to say this, Mr. Chairman, we have a lot of committees in this town, and we may start thinking about eliminating some of them if we really can't find applicants to sit on them. This is going to be a committee now with four vacancies after, after this appointment, if I read this right. Yeah.
And the other is, how do we decide the numbers of members on a committee? Some of these committees seem.
Not nine is large.
Was it the chairman?
You know.
No, it's either, it's how it's established. A lot of times, it's by bylaw or mass general law or by board policy.
But another way to, I mean, it's, you can either, you could reduce the number of committee members if that's something.
If you have to have, if you have that option.
If you have that option, right. Next is council on aging. We have three seats available and one applicant. Let's, we have two applicants, two applicants. Lenora Kelly Smith and Ella Finn. Anyone here to?
I didn't see Ms. Smith earlier, but she was.
Okay. So. The next is the cultural council. We have four seats available and one applicant.
And this is a committee that maybe could, since we now have the cultural district, might be able to be eliminated or merged with that somehow.
The Jordana Fleisch who submitted something this afternoon, too. So there's two, one of, another one of the incumbents, Reese submitted.
Because we're not taking any action tonight, we're just, this is an opportunity for the public hearing. Yeah.
And I know, too, the cultural council is the one that gives out the grants from the Mass Cultural Council. They get money from that, and then they decide on that. So I don't know how that gets merged with the cultural district, but it's something we can investigate.
And that's probably a board, then, that's required by state to have this number, number of appointments.
Next, the finance committee. There are four seats available, three applicants, Steve Maury, Cliff Williams, and Henry Sanford. Anyone from the finance committee would like to speak? Historic district commission associate, we have one seat available and no applicants. And finally, we have the mosquito control commission. We have one seat available, one applicant, Ashley Erismann. Anyone here who would like to speak to that?
So we voting these next week?
No, twenty seconds.
You just have your second public hearing next week for the rest.
For the other group? Oh, I got you, thank you.
So I will close the public hearing, and we will bring this up on the 22nd again. Libby, town managers' report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have an update on the Scotet Rotary Flagpole Project. And I will warn you that this is a saga of sorts, and it is not over. And one of the ultimate recommendations is going to be to seek CPC funds for fiscal 18 to do a more full-blown renovation of the flagpole. I would encourage you to go out and look at it if you haven't already, because it's a substantial project. Kara has prepared a narrative about it. I don't, she doesn't need to go through every single word, but an overview of what's happened and what we'd like to plan for would be helpful.
I drove out there Sunday. It's a little better than the pictures from a couple of 18 months.
Yes, it's, it's got a temporary fix in place, which again is temporary, but it's going to take some doing to get it back to what it should be.
The very first year I was here, Dale had gone up in the tree truck to do painting on the, the main part of the mast. The jackstaff section is fine, but at the top of the mast section, there was a lot of rot. So he went and he putted it, and we repainted it. But I asked him if he would look back next year to see how it weathered. And unfortunately, what happened was everything that was putted was gone. And it was actually rotted some more. And as is noted in the memo, it was built in the 30s. So it's a, it certainly doesn't owe us anything in terms of its years of service. At that point, we applied to the CPC for a grant of $65,000 at that point to replace the wooden mast, the jackstaff we were saving. Unfortunately, we were not granted that money, and not having the amount budgeted, my staff felt as if they had the skills in-house to take care of replacing it. We approached the Scotet Civic Association, and they donated, I think, $3,200. We purchased a post that had to be rounded. And our operations manager spent many, many hours rounding it down. They also went out to try to remove the pole from the rotary, and I think they applied 25 tons of pressure and couldn't get it out. So they, there was a fear that it was going to go down, so they cut it. And we spent the better part of two years trying to get it out. And unfortunately, what we subsequently discovered is that the way it was constructed was flared down to the concrete collar, and then actually flared a great deal more into the ground. So there's no way it was going to come out. We got down as far as we could with burning and excavating and drilling and, and everything else. And the operation manager retired. And we realized that we needed to get some outside intervention. And town administration worked with our OPM and an architectural firm to take a look at it. And the estimates that we now have are about $100,000 if we do a fiberglass pole and $200,000 to $250,000 if we do a wooden pole. So I am not going to make that decision as to which it is. I'm here to ask you what your thoughts are. I've also reached out to the Scotet Civic Association to meet with them, and we will be approaching HDC. I have talked with Michael May, who feels that it would be most appropriate for a wooden pole. But I'm here for your input.
So what happens when we, if we don't get money from the CPC?
Then we will have to budget it through the capital process.
So, but this hasn't come through the capital project committee, so you're not recommending?
Not yet.
Anything?
Well, not, not yet, but we might want to consider concurrent paths of funding.
My experience with the CPC is they don't like to fund town projects.
I, as the CPC rep, I think this would be a very worthy project. I think we do have to have an alternate funding source planned, because the CPC funds don't get decided upon until September, and then not voted until the following April. As a former HDC person, the, the HDC during my time on the board was really, really strict about not allowing any fake trim on houses, fake columns. I mean, fake, I mean, like fiberglass product. So I think it would be really hard as a town to even try to pursue a fiberglass manufactured flagpole to replace a historic flagpole, when the HDC's been so strict on just private homes that may not even have visibility.
Do we know what the flagpole, the rotary's made out of?
The existing one is wood.
The one at the rotary right now?
The main rotary?
Oh, no, that's, that's a.
Steel, right?
Steel.
Yeah.
Aluminum.
And the one down at, down at the, at the Legion?
It's another composite, it's not wood.
Yeah.
So they got through the HDC, maybe?
So.
So you could ask.
My neighbors are aluminum, I can hear the.
Yeah, the clanking.
Just as a contradiction to what our present representative said, I was the city rep on the CPC when this came through last time, and they were adamant about the fact that this is not what their money was supposed to be spent for, that this was something that the town should do, and the town should start taking care of its own stuff. So I think we need two, two courses of, you know, we need. But we need to be prepared that if we have to do this out of the capital funds budget, this may not happen for years.
Maybe they'll pay us the difference between metal and.
Won't like to hear that.
Fiber glass and wood.
Well, we did install the jackstaff in a concrete collar so that there would be a flag flying. But it is, you know, a miniature of what was there before.
So it seems to me the folks most closely involved, aside from the HDC, are the residents of Scotet. And I would think the first place you go to help make the decision on the, what it's made of, is to go there. And if it's twice expensive, they might want to step up and share half the burden, or something like that. You know, they can be very generous, and it's a good thing for everybody if that's the choice they recommend. So that's my thought.
Any other thoughts from board members?
Okay.
Okay, thank you for the update.
We can threaten, just, we can threaten to put the signs, the historic signs. Did you see the old building? You want to pull it up? The Scotet Bookstore, it's like 127 or, yeah, some of the pictures are pretty impressive.
Historically, there was a porch swing in the, in the rotary.
And before they put the rotary in, yeah, see, look at that sign here. We'll threaten the HDC, like, look at those.
That's what's really.
That's a historic sign, right.
That's what I'm saying, it looks like they list everything, and it's still with the Scotet Bookstore. I made it larger.
There's a, there's a really good, I don't want to get off track, but there's a really good picture of that on the steamship. You know, they have their line, and you can read every word on that sign. And they literally have everything listed that they sell in that store on that sign.
Yeah, the HDC would never approve that.
It is a billboard.
All right, Libby?
I'll report back after I meet with them.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kara. The next item is more of an information item for the board about what we are doing to get ready for our beaches for the summer. And we've worked very hard over the last couple of years to address some issues that have existed for a while in terms of coordination and making the beaches look better, and keeping them up, and addressing concerns as they arise over the summer. And we have a, really, a team of Public Works, Marine Department, and Natural Resources. I think that's it, to deal with all this. And everybody has a role, and they coordinate, coordinate pretty regularly on, on beach issues. We also have a really great relationship with the land bank as, for, for some beaches that are adjacent to each other, like out in Dionis, and they are always extremely helpful in providing assistance when we need it.
What I want to let you know is that the Harbor Master and our staff and Jeff Carlson, Natural Resources Director, have all met to discuss the beaches. Natural Resources Director, have all met to discuss the beaches. And at this point, the, all of the structures that our bathrooms are open, the porta-potties are being delivered as we speak, the screens are being put out to surround the porta-potties, the trash bins are going out, the solar bellies are out, the trash bins are out, the bike racks are out, and we're in the process of installing new bike racks at the Surfside Beach. The Surfside Beach and Jetties have both been swept. We have the Moby mats are out at Jetties. And we've got, are, a long way down the path to getting everything ready for the season. Jeff is here and Sheila is here, if you have any questions as well.
Sheila, come on up. We'd love to hear from you too. And Jeff?
Okay, so we're, we're on track with our, with a beach maintenance plan that's behind you. Biggest thing that we've been working on is accesses because of the erosion out at Cisco and in Maticet. But we have several plans for, for those ramps that we purchased. We have several different options. We're gaining beach back every day, so it's starting to look like we're not going to have any problems at all getting them out there. This plan gets updated every, every Friday and it'll tell you where we stand. It gives you a date of when we're, when we're going to have it in by and where we are with the progress with it. In Maticet, there was some large debris out there. There was some, there was a couple septic tanks and a couple things like that that have been removed. Right now, all that's left is some wires and some PVC pipe that we're, we're working on. They'll be out by, by this weekend. The ramps are due to be in by the thirteenth of June. The, the lifeguards will be on the beach on the twenty-ninth. They're coming in for training in the next couple of weeks. So the beaches will be completely set up, ready for lifeguards on the thirteenth of June. On, all the ramps will be installed. We bought a ramp for Children's Beach to make that handicap access. That's an aluminum ramp, four feet wide. We're hoping to have that in by Friday. And everything else looks, looks on track. We do have the Twitter account is going that people can go on and get the beach report every day from the lifeguards. It tells you what color the flags are. We also have a thing with ninety-seven-seven, beach reports given every day, all, all the weekdays of what the flag colors are and what the concerns are at all the beaches on ninety-seven-seven. And we're, we're in pretty good shape as far as the beaches go, working with the DPW. We have a few construction projects that we're going to do like at Surfside. We're going to paint the trim and stuff. We've just been waiting for the weather to get warm enough for the paints to stick.
Thanks, Sheila. Jeff?
All right, real quickly, Jeff Carlson. All of our state and federal required endangered species fencing and protection is in place. We're starting to see nests on the ground now. Looks like they'll all be, all of the birds are going to be located in areas that have historically had birds. We haven't had any new ones show up yet. Just for updates on, on jetties as always in particular, it looks like those birds should be completely done by the fourth of July, so hopefully we won't have any restrictions there if all goes well and nothing, nothing abandons. Other than that, we have the same system in place that we did last year. We're going to be giving weekly updates to the police, DPW and everything for any required closures that we have as a result of that. That being said as well, we're hoping that everything gets in and out a little sooner this year so we don't have any openings and we haven't had any birds really show up yet in the Surfside area outside of Point of Breakers. So hopefully that stretch between Nobodere and Fisherman's Beach will stay open. Other updates for our access that we've had, for those who haven't been down, the Cathcart parking lot was completed by the land bank, which will hopefully alleviate that area a little bit. Other programs that we run are sanitary water sampling will begin a week before the lifeguards start, so kind of the third week of June, we'll start doing our required testing for the health department to make sure there's no fecal coliform or any other contaminants in the water that prohibits swimming. Other than that, we're kind of on track for everything there. We've been working with our Smith Point homeowners to get out into the beach and get all their maintenance done before we have any possible interactions with protected species out there. So that's been really positive this year as well.
Comments, questions?
Jeff, so right now Surfside's still open, Point of Breakers. It looks like that might stay open, you're thinking?
Uh, it doesn't look like Point of Breakers will stay open, but we're hoping to keep that access from Surfside through Nobodere open this year. There's already nesting pullovers and turns down at Point of Breakers, so those should be scheduled to hatch pretty soon and that's when we have to close.
Is that one of the areas where we ask for the, the special exemptions?
We inquired about that special exemption. That's a property that, that Audubon, Mass Audubon runs. As we've been going through that process, some of the requirements they've been putting on, other areas or other areas have applied for are fairly extreme, including a dedicated staff person provide individual vehicle escorts all day long. The program looks like it's costing a couple towns to implement for very small stretches, smaller than Point of Breakers, an additional, I mean, budget-wise, and I haven't put it into our numbers yet, but I know some of the towns on the Cape are looking at an extra sixty to seventy-five thousand dollars a year in staffing costs and fencing. It's well above and beyond what's required now to maintain some of these things with a lot of strings and stipulations. And they haven't issued the full habitat conservation plan yet, so they're not even issuing their certificates of inclusion at this point. So it looks like it's going to be a very costly program to get involved with when they have the final conditions in place, but it, if we're still interested in participating, we can, I mean, we've kind of participated all along, but we haven't dedicated those kinds of resources to do those things yet.
The other question I had for you is, you said it looks like the birds are going to be off, uh, jetties by the fourth?
Right now, if they're on schedule, the last bird should fledge there from in front of the restaurant if they follow the calendar by about June the twenty-fifth. So we should have a little bit of leeway just in case those guys are, are slow.
I think it'd be great this year if we could get the barge a little closer to the beach than we've had in the past.
It would be nice. I also would love to get all that fencing off the beach and have that full beach available for the fourth as well. Get it raked and do all of those things. So hopefully, hopefully that goes well.
One of the reasons the pops is so spectacular is because the fireworks are right there.
Yeah. Anything else, any other questions?
Jim, one question, just on the surround, the fencing around the porta-potties, what's the material or, have you seen a picture of it? We're all, we're all happy.
It's a cedar fencing and it was up last year. It's the same thing.
Cedar fencing. It's the same thing. Okay, thank you.
Thank you all and happy birthday, Jeff. Mr. Chairman, I wanted to just give you a quick update about six fairgrounds and the housing project. We had a work group meeting today and we had hoped to have a more significant update for you at your meeting next week, but we are still trying to sort out a few things and we think we'll have a more complete packet to give you for the eighth. But today, we've been talking a little bit about the subsidized housing inventory numbers and how to maximize them in this development and getting what we do and don't want to see in the development accurately into a request for proposals to be issued. And we believe we need some professional assistance regarding how to really analyze the financial aspects, options of the RFP and of, of how a developer would finance it and fund it and keep it running. So we are going to be talking to the same consultant that the Zoning Board of Appeals is using for a fortyB proposal, Ed Marchant, and we're going to hopefully talk to him next week about what to look for and show him some numbers that Remain had helped us develop about a year ago, based on, on some assumptions that we were working with then, which need to be updated now. We've, we've modified a few things to match the current zoning. So that is moving along. Does anybody from the group, Mr. Fee and Ms. Holgate, Andrew Vorse and Tucker Holland and I have been working on it.
I think we're hoping to come back with some recommendations and just get final consensus of the whole board on a few items, but we're still fine, fine-tuning those questions.
Yeah, I agree. It's our, it's, I look at things, I'd like to know the numbers upfront of what, you know, if we did it ourselves or mostly ourselves or half ourselves or, you know, or how do the developers do it? How do they finance it? What's the benefit to town? I just, my concern is I want to make sure we get the biggest bang for the buck in that we, either in housing town employees and/or in getting some benefit from this. And, you know, I have some, so that's, we've had a lot of questions.
So we look forward to hearing more.
Jim, can I ask one? It's not on this, but it's close. Just to follow up, Libby, we had, when we had Housing Nantucket in here, there was a discussion about the shy list and they were going to come back to us, I thought, to tell us how they were going to deal with that subject?
Was this in connection with the Tacoma lot?
It's with the connection with the sewer waivers.
Yeah.
And I think we, at least I haven't heard back, so I, just to follow up on them, okay?
Have either of you heard?
I think, didn't we vote, didn't, didn't, I can't remember, did we vote that the sewer waivers were contingent on the houses being on the shy list?
Yes.
I think we did. I was in the audience at the time.
So I think if they want to get that waiver, those fees, they have to come back.
But I think it's of interest at some point to know what happened.
But as you, just so you know, as you dig into the whole shy list and how, how you get on the list and how, what is allowed, it's pretty, it can be difficult and, you know, and so...
So, you know, personally, when you do make your report, I think maybe a little tutorial on the shy list would be, because I know it's, it's a term used a lot, but I don't know, so.
Tucker might be able to give a little bit of information now? Is that what you're saying?
Sure, okay.
Sorry.
Tucker Holland, just in answer to Mr. Atherton's question, so the, in order for the units at To Come Away to be included on the shy list, technically goes through the LAU process, which the town technically is the applicant for, but the developer is the one who really is providing the meat of the application. And so I believe that Housing Nantucket is working on putting together that meat that would go with the application from the town technically to the state.
And to accomplish the objective.
To accomplish the objective, yeah.
Okay, thank you, Tucker.
Good, thank you. Libby, next item is selectmen reports and comment and Libby's going to introduce the discussion of the tip program.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Annually, the transportation, transportation planner comes to the board to review the annual transportation improvement program that is put forward to the state through the Nantucket Planning and Economic Development Commission. And we tried to schedule it earlier this year so that the board would have a chance to provide input specific to any of the projects that are either in already or that you might want to see in. And the, the projects need to meet varying levels of criteria depending on the, to get into the plan and connect to other plans and programs. And so Mike has a good overview of the tip in general and the specific projects. And so if any board members have a specific project that you do or don't see in there that you want to discuss, I think now's the time to get that input.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, Mike Burns of the Nantucket Planning Office. As the town manager said, the, the tip is essentially a listing or a five-year listing of federal aid eligible projects, not necessarily town-funded for construction, but this is the ones that are federally eligible. And in order to be listed in that planning document, it needs to be listed also in the transportation plan. So just so you know, we have a draft tip that will be out for public review, June sixth through July eighteenth, available in a number of different locations, but this, the purpose of this meeting here is just to get your input on that plan and at the end of it, request action that you recommend to the NPDSC that they endorse the scheduled projects that I'm about to run through. Again, all the projects that are listed in the tip can be found in the, the town's CIP. The town funds most of the design or all of the design funding, as well as they can fund other mitigating permitting issues and right-of-way acquisition as well. So that's why a lot of these projects are found within the town's capital plan. And they're listed here. It's hard to read. I'll just blow that up and show you that...
Do you want to take questions as we go or?
I think yes.
I just, I think what I heard, which I, I just want to confirm that I guess the idea that anything in here is in the capital improvement program? That's the CIP you referred to?
Correct. Included in your packet and shown, it's hard to see, but it's shown here, this is a listing of all the projects, all transportation-related projects. These are federally eligible and ones that aren't, but will be funded by the town. Those include town repaving projects, First Way as a, for instance, Wind Street, those kinds of projects.
Which are not eligible for federal funding.
No, those are, those are routinely more locally funded projects. It goes through the town's capital review process and may not necessarily be eligible for the tip, but we try to merge the tip eligible projects with the town's, town-funded projects, just so they have one capital plan that shows all transportation improvement projects, regardless of funding source, but just...
Which, which I applaud. I think that's great. I, I actually found your, I don't know if it's included here, but your, sort of the mechanism, the, the criteria you use to prioritize, I found very helpful over time. And I think it's something the town could almost use in, in some ways itself. It forces a rational approach to the prioritization.
Yeah.
And, and so is that, have you used that, if my memory serves me right, with, to integrate the towns in the priority listing, Mike?
I have. And I'll blow this up and you can see really quickly here in, in one column here, a project evaluation score from the transportation plan. Obviously, I'm not going to go into all the details. There's a number of different variables.
I'm just trying to get what you, what you've done, not to...
Exactly. So there is some level of prioritization based on the merits of the project, the impacts of the project, as well as the level of improvement that it would provide for the tip. It takes that priority and then tries to organize it based on readiness. Is the project funded? Are there potential issues such as right-of-way acquisitions that could delay it? There are certain readiness thresholds that dictates what year a project can be included in the tip. If a project's already in the design process and has had a public hearing on the initial design, obviously you're going to find that in the early years of the tip. Projects that aren't necessarily funded for design at all would be founded, would be found in a later year or not at all in the tip. So that kind of guides the, the rationale for, for including that. And that's also what, one of the guiding principles for the CIP. It's, again, organized based off of the, these, these scoring of a project's merit. And what I've highlighted here in yellow are the projects that could be included in this year's transportation improvement program. Again, this is one of the, we try to update every, it is updated every single year. These are the ones that are included this year. The ones that are included in orange are eligible to be included in the tip, but may not necessarily be for this version of the tip. It may be a, a number of years outside of this five-year window. Those include the Fairgrounds, Old South Intersection, Tom Nevers Bike Path, those kinds of projects that are eligible. They, they could be funded in the tip, but not necessarily, they're not ready to be included in the tip at this time. So I included this listing of projects for the CIP just to demonstrate that the tip projects are included in the town's plan, just for this current year. Again, the, the tip that is in draft form now is FY seventeen through FY two thousand twenty-one. The current year, FY sixteen is, you're all very familiar with this project, the Phase One of the in-town bike path, which would provide a paved path through the railroad causeway from the end of Washington Street Extension to the intersection of Goose Pond Lane and Orange Street, where Orange Street will be configured to have bike lane on both sides of the road for traffic and that's shown here in the cross-section. Again, the primary purpose of the path is to provide an accessible route along the railroad causeway. Here's the existing condition and the proposed condition that would provide a rest area and an accessible path for two-way traffic, pedestrians and things. So that project, again, as it's shown here, is, it was, in this fiscal year, the construction has been bid, the design is complete, but the bids will be open on June first. So next Wednesday, we should know what the cost of that project should be and it could be implemented, at least start to be implemented in the fall.
So that's the pathway over the causeway itself?
Exactly.
So you're that close, okay. Good.
And I'll, and for FY seventeen, if you look at the schedule, there's really not a federal aid eligible road project, but what there is an option to do is, the NRTA has... road project, but what there is an option to do is, the NRTA has scheduled bus replacements. Some older vehicles get replaced with newer vehicles, so we're allowed to, to use that funding to replace bus vehicles, and that's what is anticipated to be done for FY17. For the outer years, FY18, there, there still is not a federally aided project available, but what we could have ready for FY18 is the intersection of Surfside Road and Bartlett Road. You may recall the town's already approved funding for this intersection in the past with property acquisitions to, to Bartlett Road. They've, $150,000 has been appropriated for design of the intersection at this past town meeting. But because the project just hasn't advanced far enough along, the guidance we're given from the Massachusetts Department of Transportation is to include that in FY19. That's, at this time, a realistic fiscal year to include that project. However, because property's already been acquired, and this is probably a project with not a lot of issues as far as implementation, could be, if it's ready, included in FY18. The expense of that project requires two fiscal years, so we're including that over two fiscal years in the tip.
So, back, back to the NERTA buses, we've, I've heard from folks about the noise levels of the buses, and is there any, can you, if you, are you in the detail of the configuration of the buses and the, and the fuel and all that?
I can tell you what the administrator tells me, and that's, this is the best technology that we have right now. It's not to say it's not going to improve over time, but right now, for the size of vehicle that we have, it's a smaller vehicle, and the, and it's just the best technology we have right now.
Just to be clear, that sounds like no change to me.
Not, not this year.
Can I ask a question about that? We can fund for purchasing new buses, can any of this money be used for funding a year-round service, Mike?
Not for operations, operations is a bit of a different story, but capital, the equipment, we can, we can flex that over for.
Do you know if they had any capital dollars set aside to fund this that could be reallocated to operating?
This is very strict about the, the use of capital funds in operation.
I doubt it.
Yeah, only because operations is something that, that's a commitment that goes for future years as well, and capital's a one-time only. So this project's included in FY19 and 20 of the, the draft tip. The next project, what could be included in the most, the fifth year of the tip in 2021, is the implementation of the future phases of the in-town bike path. I talked about Phase One at the very beginning, these are the future phases along Washington Street, which, just like Orange Street, would be configured to have bike lanes, or a bike lane on both sides of the road for, for bicycle traffic, it's Washington Street and Orange Street. So that, those are the years that, right now, again, this could be bumped up depending on how the other projects progress, but right now, that's implementation of a project scheduled for FY21 using federal aid. And as I noted at the beginning, this is, the, the tip is a document that's approved by the NPDC. However, we do do it in consultation with the town of Nantucket. We do ask for a ceremonial action from this board to show that there is some consensus, and we've demonstrated there's some conformity with the projects that are listed in the tip. They are listed in the town's CIP, so the ceremonial action that we would ask is that you recommend to the NPDC that they approve the, those are the wrong years listed there, but the FY17 to '21 tip as, as presented.
So, you know, there, I'm not sure how important the timing of it is, we can, we can take some deliberation, but if this committee is ready, that this group is ready to take some action, we can tonight. I know it was a lot to, to review, but any comments or questions from anyone?
No, just, just a general comment, I, I've always felt that since the NPDC has one town, it's not truly a regional, like in Western Mass, that, that our input is, is critical. It's sort of like it's our plan.
Absolutely.
So I, even though it may be ceremonial, I think it's important that we really do understand, and there's a lot of information, so it's hard to really absorb it all.
And we can, we can take another week to review it and think about it.
Wouldn't hurt, I, I, it's laid out, it takes some work, but I like the way it's laid out.
No, it's very thoughtfully done.
I'm impressed, yeah.
And I agree, I don't, I'm not sure, if it is ceremonial, I probably wouldn't call it ceremonial, because I appreciate the integration of this plan with the, the capital plan. So, it's your pleasure, we can, Rick, would you like another week?
You know, I don't, I don't mind taking another week, if others don't mind, if they want to go ahead, that's fine, and we can always comment on specific items separately, and, because it's not absolutely final, is my sense.
It goes out for public comment?
It goes out for public review, June 6th through July 18th. The NPDC will have a meeting on this on June 6th.
It does take a long time.
Though, the one thing that's not in any of this, which I can, I understand, but I think we should at least put it on the radar, is the lower end of Main Street and Straight Wharf, and where the High Line boat's coming in now, and the whole Wilk Square Plan and the Tank Farm's going away, and, you know, I'm going to talk about this more later on at the end of our committee reports, but, you know, we need to, we're going to need to do some work down there. The town is going to need to do some work down there, and I don't know if it, if it necessarily should go in this plan, or maybe it just goes into our capital plan, or where it goes, but, you know, we're talking about transportation here, and that is a transportation issue, so, you know, I just don't know, Mike, I mean, I, I know this plan from what, I haven't really had a chance to completely absorb it, but it doesn't look much different from what we reviewed when I was on the NPDC a few years ago, maybe the same plan that we're just finally getting to approve now, because I know we had a five-year plan that we had to do then. So, but, you know, this is sort of a new thing that's come up with the new, with the bigger ferry and the more ferries, and I don't know if it's something that we should try to incorporate, maybe not this year, but in the future, but if this is a five-year plan, we might want to at least put a line item in there for it or something.
Mr. Chairman, don't, don't forget that we have a million five that was approved at the 2016 annual town meeting for Phase One of a sidewalk improvement plan, and Phase One would be improvements in that general area. We haven't identified exactly, I mean, we, we don't have a bid spec yet, that's going to have to be developed over the summer, and hopefully that work can be done for next summer, but, but there is that amount of funding.
I think it's an important strategic question, though, because, and I'm, I'm looking forward to hearing your report, because I, but you're talking, this is a five-year plan that's updated annually.
Of federal aid eligible projects, just to make that distinction.
No, I understand, but I, and I don't know what's going on at Wilk Square.
Something down there would be eligible for federal aid, Mike, or not, that's what I guess I'm asking is, is there anything down there that would be considered eligible, or is it more, is it more like bike paths and?
Bike paths along major roadways, major roadway intersection improvements, those kinds of projects. Again, just like the town manager just mentioned, we, we do try to pursue a sidewalk improvement plan that's more locally funded, that's not to say in the next topic, we'll get into something that could be other funds that are available from state and federal sources that could fund these.
So the one, then, the one that jumps out at me that's on this plan now that might tie to that is that, the lower section of Washington Street tying into Goose Pond. Because once you get out past Marine Lumber, it's not, it's, traffic's going to alleviate, but, yeah, the upper section there, future phase, bike path lanes, I don't know what year we're looking at that, looks like 2021, we may need to bump that sooner than later. You know, once we get Goose Pond done, we may want to do that lower section, or at least something there to, to help alleviate some of that traffic.
Yeah.
Okay?
So, just one other question, if I might, just happen, again, looking at this. The Baxter Road construction, you have $500,000 in there for that? Is that related to the discussions we've had before about Baxter Road, or is that a separate?
That's the discussions that we had before. And what I wanted to do was compliment Mike on the way that we've been working together, we meet on a weekly basis, and we actually went through, I think, most of the planning documents that, if not all, of the planning documents to identify the action items from every single one of them, and that's what generated this list. The reason we didn't put Wilk Square on it is because there hasn't been a consensus on it, but as soon as a consensus develops, then that will be added to the plan. And it's, it's a moving document, so if you look at it tomorrow, it's going to look different. But I, I do want to compliment Mike on coordinating the federally funded projects and state-funded projects with our locally funded projects. That's never been done before, and we now have a synthesis of that.
So what is the pleasure of the board, do you want to take action tonight or defer for a week?
I don't think I'm, I don't think I'm going to change, I think it's, I like how it's laid out. I don't think I'm going to change my mind in a week necessarily.
Yeah, I mean, I, as I say, I think as long as there's opportunity to have comments later on as we spend more time on specific items, I don't mind approving it to keep it moving along, but it's with that understanding, Mike.
And I think we have that, so is there a motion to approve or recommend this, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Libby, we have completed.
And can I get one more quick comment?
Yes.
It's interesting that I started the night talking about the Boulevard, line one is the Boulevard for $3 million. I understand, I have to say it again, I understand why the neighbors would like the taxpayers to pay for it, but that's, if we did look like Rick had suggested a couple of years ago, embedded people 25%, we'd have $750,000 to do sort of the planning you're talking about down there, Bobby, and everything else. And I understand that that road is used by a lot of people, but I also know that the cost of that was, is, is embedded in their properties, and, you know, it would cost them 20 or 30 dollars a year, it wouldn't be a big thing. So I, I just think that betterment's are not a dirty word when you're tight on money the way we are right now. People are getting a lot of value, and, you know, the town has to not be afraid of asking for some of that back, so.
Any further discussion?
They had a lot of value, just to comment again, there's a lot of value to having it remain private for all those years. There was a long period of time where they wanted it that way, so.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Thank you. Libby, Complete Streets?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Commonwealth has introduced a new program called the Complete Streets Program. There was a training session on it in April, I believe. And it's a program that provides some level of funding to municipalities in the Commonwealth for sort of technical assistance types of things, and then construction types of things, up to certain amounts, up to 50 for the technical assistance and up to $400,000 for particular types of construction projects. And we've been talking it over at the staff level, I had a concern that we were going to maybe be adopting something that has so many strings and requirements and conditions that we wouldn't be able to meet them all. However, I'm assured by my staff that actually, unlike maybe many other towns, we already go through a pretty extensive review of sidewalk, bike path, and roadway projects that pretty well meet most of the conditions that are contained within the state's program. So we are recommending that the board adopt the policy, Mike can explain it, and once it's adopted, we would be eligible for this funding, which is being made available. So maybe, Mike, you could give a, an overview?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, that's pretty, pretty well said. I'll just add a note that this is a two-year program, and it's, again, statewide, all towns in the Commonwealth have access to these funds if they approve a policy that is scored well by the Commonwealth. But, again, the funds for this are through, actually casino permitting, so as soon as those funds dry up, I'm, I'm sure there'll be another source that's tried to be found to fund this program if it turns to be successful. It's a, there's a three-step process, as mentioned, there was a training part of, it was part of this, it was held in April. A number of different committees from the town attended this, Selectment Fee attended the training session. The policy's been developed in coordination with the Roads and Right-of-Way Committee, the Bike and Pedestrian Committee, the NPDC has taken action to recommend that the board adopt the policy. So it's, it's kind of made its rounds through the different groups. So now we're here tonight to see if we actually adopt that. Again, the policy has to score 80 points, I'll go into that somewhat later in the presentation. But the next step would be development of a prioritization plan. Staff has essentially targeted the sidewalk improvement plan. For the previous presentation was noted that there's 1.5 million available for sidewalk improvements downtown. This could be another 400, 450,000 available for prioritization and construction to that, so we could have as much as 2 million now for that sidewalk program. And the last step, once we prioritize these projects, is to actually get approval to proceed. And again, this is treated, not necessarily the tip process, but more of a Chapter 90-type process, toward the town would be reimbursed following implementation. Again, the elements of the policy, I'm not going to go through all of these, but just the, the first and the seventh element are worth noting, it's, the intent is to show that the towns are committed to Complete Streets principles, providing accessibility for all users, bike, pedestrian, disabled, all users and abilities, and that there's a strong commitment, and the towns are serious about this. But, again, with there being some sensitivity to context, and our context is historical, and there needs to be some sensitivity to our historic integrity, and we believe our policy notes that there needs to be some consideration of the historical as well as accessible needs in the community. As far as commitments?
Go ahead.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead, no.
Okay. As far as commitments, again, along with just keeping a database within our GIS of all the pedestrian and bicycle infrastructure that highlights the needs, and, and thinking about the principles for all users in the capital planning process and training staff, what will really be critical part of this is interdepartmental coordination to kind of ensure that there's, at least on an internal basis, that there's been consideration of, of all the user groups for, for all projects. And a lot of this is found at the planning board level through the development review. There, there's a lot in the subdivision rules and regulations already that ensures that a lot of developments provide sidewalks as part of the development, so a lot of that already kind of exists here in Nantucket, we're very successful in that. It's unfortunate some other communities aren't as successful, but I think that's something we'd be proud of. And, and again, we'll, we'll also be committed to finding other sources of funding in addition to this Complete Streets in order to realize the principles of a Complete Street, of providing not just for, for vehicles, but all, all modes of transportation. The next steps in this process, again, the action from the, that's requested is to selectmen adopt a Complete Streets policy, staff will submit that to MassDOT for scoring. Again, we have to score 80 of 100 possible points, we'll formalize an internal review process for reviewing process, projects, just, for instance, like the, the capital review process. And then by July 1st, we should know how the policy scores from, from MassDOT, and we can initiate the, the step of prioritizing, again, our sidewalk improvement program, because that's what we would like to use for this Complete Streets funding. Happy to answer any questions.
I'm just trying to think, can you, is there an example that you've come across that would help us understand where something we've done the past couple of years or that we planned would be done differently by adopting this than we would have done otherwise? I mean, is there more emphasis on A as opposed to B, or?
I, I would say not necessarily, our, our transportation plan lists out a lot of goals and objectives that identifies the needs, we are a tourist-oriented community, and we sell biking on the commute, walking in our downtown, taking transit, we already do this very successfully. And again, this is a statewide program, so although we are very successful, and some, some communities aren't as successful, so it, this is a way of having a level playing field and having all communities in Commonwealth go through the process in a similar fashion. We're just basically using the template that's provided to us and kind of fill in the blanks very easily, I'll, I'll note, just because we are so successful in, in addressing the needs of all users already. We just have to go through the procedurally what we have to do in order to receive some of this extra money to, to do a little bit more than what we're already currently funded to do using state funds.
And you're asking this board to adopt this policy, so is there a motion to adopt the Complete Streets policy as presented by Mike Burns?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Sure. Any discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no?
No.
One opposed? Thank you. Thanks, Mike. So, Libby, item four.
Why, why oppose, Bobby, just? I just don't like the state telling us how to do our job. And every time we try, we take money from the state, we get a little bit of money, and we get a lot of strings attached. I just.
Yeah, no, I sympathize with that, but they're, they're telling us that's not the case.
Well, yeah, they always say that, but it's a moving target, the state changes things, and I don't need the state telling me how to do sidewalks, we, you know, I think about bike paths that we put in where we had to, they wanted yellow lines down the middle of them, they wanted those rubber bumpers at the edge of each driveway and road.
And 46 stop signs.
Yeah, and they got to be 10 feet wide when they used to be five, it just, it just.
It just, it just.
We're going to go back and take those stop signs out.
For $4,000, I don't want anybody telling me how to do it. So I just voted no. You got, you got it.
Yeah, no, I agree. I just wanted, I wanted to clarify.
That was why.
And I had some concerns that they were going to make you do, make us do everything on every street, but that isn't the goal. The goal is to have that option. If you want to get to hospital, you have the option of getting there safely three or four different ways.
I'm sure it's going to be a great thing, I just don't trust them.
All right, well, we'll call, we'll ask you to be the gatekeeper.
Right, make sure it doesn't happen to us.
Right. Libby, Board of Selectmen's Strategic Planning Process.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. At the last meeting, I was sort of tasked with looking into a couple of things, including a facilitator, and I just wanted to report in on what has happened so far. I've communicated with a current town manager, a former town manager, and a local citizen about being the facilitator during a, say, a half-day retreat-like session. And I have, I'm waiting for a little bit of information back, but a couple of those people are available. One of them, the local citizen, actually would probably be better in a role to help us write up the plan rather than actually being the facilitator. If any of you know of a, of a local resident who you think might be suited for that kind of thing, please let me know. I do have a couple of other people in mind, and I'm going to be contacting them over the next week or so. We are also having the departments get together the, the plan inventory that, Rick, I think you had mentioned. And that has also transformed into a little bit more of, of a process in terms of, not related to the strategic plan, but we had a staff-level discussion about it the other day, and we all agreed we should have all of these plans in a central place, and at least once a year, we should all take a look at the ones that are under our jurisdiction and see when they're supposed to be updated, what's happened.
Where's, where's their overlap?
Where's their overlap? Exactly. Things like that. So that was, that was a very helpful exercise. So we're still in the process of getting that inventory together, but we ought to have that by the time the, the thing is ready.
Next, go to go into committee reports and Board of Selectmen comments, and I just have one, and I'm glad Alan stayed for this. As Chair of the Board of Selectmen, as Chair of the Board of the Land Bank, Alan and I've had a couple of conversations about the importance of our close working relationship. We have some important projects that are before us, and so in the next, sometime in June, we're still working on the dates, the two boards will be meeting in open session to just have a dialogue between board members and between the boards and gain an understanding about processes that we both go through, the rules that we both have. We won't be, we won't be negotiating individual projects, but it'll be an opportunity for us to all sit around the table and get to know each other and understand everybody's perspectives. And Alan, I don't know if you want to add anything, but you're welcome to.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I look forward to this. I think that, you know, there are some questions as far as the responsibilities that we share. And I think, I believe very strongly in communication. I think that the more we can communicate what our concerns are, what are the issues that we deal with as our individual responsibilities, I, I look forward to this.
Thank you. Thanks. Other Selectmen comments? Bobby, do you have?
Yeah, I have a couple. So the new Highline schedule is running. The new Highline boat is not, and it, not sure when it's going to be running. I keep, it's a moving target. I believe it's going to be sometime in July.
The ramp is there.
The ramp is there. And the, and the new additional boat schedule's there, even though they're not carrying additional passengers. So this was the first real test weekend wine festival, nowhere near what the capacity will be when it gets going. But we, as a town, are going to have to do our part to make this function. Winthrop, NIR, Highline, the Boat Basin, they're all working together to try to figure out their end of it. But the end of Straight Wharf is going to need a police presence on it for probably a good month, if not longer. And when I say a police presence, I mean an officer with a gun and the ability to write tickets on the spot, not a community officer who tells somebody to move and they tell them to go pound tar. The cab drivers are extremely bad. They're parking on the yellow line, they're pulling up, they're double parking, they're blocking the road. And just the amount of people that are coming on and off of that boat now, and the amount of trips that are coming on and off that boat. We have to keep that bottom end of Straight Wharf open. They have their cab stands, they, you know, they, it's not, it's a hard habit to break. They've had all winter where they park on the old lines, and they park here, and they park there, and they double park, and they walk up to get their, you know, to, by the bandstand and say that they're taxi drivers, and then they take the people back to their cab. They need to stay with their cabs, they need to park up in front of the courtyard and up it, and up in front of the club car, or circle the block like everybody else does, but they can't just sit there and block the road.
And also blocks the traffic trying to get out of the parking lot.
And, you know, somebody's going to.
Who's picked up family members and.
If somebody's going to get run over down there, or some, or if they're, God forbid, there's an ambulance that needs to get down there, it's just not going to happen. So we need to have, I think we're going to have to have a presence there for a while until people get the hang of it.
I was going to ask, too, about Newell Lane. This might be a question for you, Kara. Sorry to put you on the spot, but I was just driving down to the Highline the other day, and it's really rutted, those cobblestones down there. We, we haven't spent a lot of time there because of the trucks that are accessing the, the, the fuel tanks. When they turn into the, the tank area, they pop the cobbles. So it's, has seemed like a never-ending task. So that end of it, we haven't touched, but we have tried to keep up with the section from there to the bottom of Main.
It's really pretty bad just past there.
Okay.
Like right, sort of below the Anglers Club.
It happens every year when the water floods the road.
Yeah, no, I'm sure.
This is a perfect example of a road that shouldn't be cobblestoned. That road should be paved. That's the bottom line. That should be paved from that corner up to, at least up to the, where it's the stop-and-stop parking lot.
Or if we can wait until the fuel farm, tank farm moves, we'll be in better shape as well.
Do you think there's some action they need to take now, or?
Yes, we will go.
I think that there's some repair that needs to be done down there. But, yeah, I mean, I'm assuming that there will be a total redevelopment as part of, once the tank farm moves.
But I appreciate the note, we will take care of that.
But, yeah, so we're, I think, at least, especially this weekend, we're going to need a police presence down there. And then the other question I had was, we're almost into June, and I still haven't seen any signs of the Army Corps doing any work on the jetty, so could you ask Dave for an update?
Yep, we talked about it earlier this week, and I think they are actually planning to start at the middle to end of June. But I could.
Yeah, I know, it seems like it's been, it keeps getting bumped and bumped and bumped and.
There was a bid protest, which has just only recently been resolved. I could, I could have.
That took about a year.
It took quite a while.
Do you think everybody in the community is aware of what's going to happen and the impact on people?
Well, we've talked about it, but the impact is, is going to be two barges on that West Jetty, and they're going to be working 24 hours a day, seven days a week for the next two years. And there will be lights, bright, bright white working deck lights on that barge. So when you drive downtown this winter, this summer, it's going to look like the football field is down at Jetty's beach.
So I don't know, maybe that's something in the paper, but it'd be nice to have, again, just because people won't remember, and just before it happens, it'd be good to get some information out of it.
I can have Dave come in next week and give an update.
They are going to, they did promise that they would shut down the work on 4th of July for the fireworks and for the pops. I was, we were able to negotiate that into the work, into the work order, so.
Other Selectmen comments? Rick?
Yeah. The Board of Health met last week, and actually Matt was there for most of the meeting. I think a couple of things are worth bringing to your attention. One, we had another condemnation of a property on Macy's Lane for code violations inhabiting a basement. Really, really distressing. I mean, it's serious risk to the inhabitants, and it's a property that's had violations before. And we talked a little bit about what happens next time, and I think we're trying to make sure, coordinating between the health officer and maybe the police department, how to step up enforcement of that particular property. It's just deplorable that someone would let that happen. And I think the new health officer is to be commended for stepping up in these situations. And I think the Board of Health is very pleased with that. We had a discussion about Mr. Fee's biodegradable packaging, and I think a general, my sort of general takeaway is that the, and I think the health officer would agree, the regulations are old, they need to be updated, looked at in terms of specifics and dealt with. I think in general, those regulations cover the, I think of the input of product to the island, and they don't necessarily deal or coordinate all the time with the export of the property through the landfill. So the board, this board has some responsibility on that part of the process. And I think we talked a little bit earlier about trying to make sure we look again at our sort of total flow of what comes on in terms of plastics, but other materials as well, and how they're being disposed of, because it's an integrated question. You don't want to have a regulation, and Matt can speak this better than I can, of plastic A and find that it doesn't work in the landfill. So we clearly had a discussion that needs some further work to clarify what we really want to accomplish.
Right, you'd be better off to have a recyclable plastic or aluminum that gets, actually, doesn't end up in the hill.
Yeah, whatever it takes, Bobby.
Well, there's a big difference between recyclable and biodegradable. And the biodegradable stuff is not recyclable, but, so.
Well, it actually, some of it, some of it is. And some of the, some of the biodegradable, some of the plastic, the corn plastic will compost or biodegrade, there's certain issues, you know, and it's more complicated once you start to talk to people who have dealt with it. And it's a lot more, and so there are things that we do, thinking, this will be great, like there's a, you know, a water that I bought, oh, it's a, it's a paper box, and, you know, it's sold at Whole Foods, wouldn't this be great? Well, you start to look into it, and it is, you know, sort of recyclable, but it has to go to the right facility that separates the paper from the plastic from the metal on the box. Well, that isn't going to hap, you know, so it sounds good in theory, and you buy it thinking it's a good thing for the environment, and you find out it's actually, you're better off with a Poland Springs bottle that you hopefully will get recycled, but if it doesn't, it gets, it gets buried in the, not in the hill, it gets buried, it's, it gets bailed and put on, in the beautiful line landfill.
In the line landfill. Well, there's a difference, man.
It gets bailed and put in the line landfill, and maybe someday something will happen to it. It's, the corn stuff takes half as much energy to produce, and it produces three times as much energy if you burn it, which I thought was interesting compared to the plastic. And you do a lot, the communities that do this well do a really good job of sorting, and a lot of them are now sorting organics. You know, I think the problem I've found over the years trying to use the, the stuff coming out of our digester is that there's glass in it, because the glass gets put in inadvertently, it doesn't, doesn't get screened, so you can't, you put it in your garden, you put it on your lawn, you look, and you've got shards of glass on your lawn. And so if you did, if the town required better sorting on the front end, and possibly sorting at the facility, and fines if you didn't do it, then all of a sudden, what we put in there would put out beautiful compost, and anything that went in there that didn't compost that was, was corn or fiber, you could put on a regular compost pile for about a half a year, and it would come out as beautiful stuff. So there's different ways that people deal with it. I think we were well-intentioned doing what we did, but the, you know, I think we were well-intentioned, but I'm not sure that we're, we're, I don't think we're nearly as, as green and as recycled as we present ourselves.
As we advertise.
Yeah, I just think, you know, I, I think it's, you know.
So it's a complicated subject, and we just, we're going to all have to get into it. It's like, the more, the more you, the more you know, the more you have to know.
I will say, just not to get too much off-topic, but in Vermont, where Mike can stow, we have a, a transfer station, and your recyclable bags are free, and your garbage is 350 a bag, a large bag.
Oh, yeah, there you go.
So people recycle a lot more when they have to pay for it. We're paying for it anyway. We just don't realize it because it's on the taxes. But it may be something that we think about down the road.
There's always a lot of different ways to incentivize behavior, so.
And the haulers, in some of these places, like up in Burlington, what they'll do is, they have 20 or 30 people who volunteer and sort the different plastics, and then they'll go, you know, the, the corn plastic will go to one place, and the regular plastic goes another. The big truckload will go off to the facility to sell it, and if it shows up with a little bit of the other in it, they get fined, and it gets turned away. So you, you know, so that's why they sort it and do such a, you know, good job. Now, I'm not suggesting we have the manpower, the setup ability to do that now, but those are the types of things that you have to be thinking about. A lot of communities now are requiring homes and restaurants to put all their organics into a green bucket, and that way, that stuff gets dumped into the compost or dumped into the right pile. And if you want to bring your garbage or trash and, you know, like Bobby's saying, you pay for it, but if you bring your organics and it's able to be used, then you don't. So there's ways to incentivize it.
Rick, anything else on the Board of Health?
Well, I think that's enough.
Any other Selectmen comments, committee reports?
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Thank you, thank you very much.